All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you all for being here. First, hearing we have today is with the Daily Campus, so I'll be here. I appreciate the time and energy to come here. So, there are a variety of us that are here from the committee. People will be coming in and out. So, if you wouldn't mind just sharing these to yourselves, the committee tells what your role and responsibilities are with the Daily Campus. And then you can walk us through the information that you want to present to us. And once you're finished with that, if the committee has any questions for you specifically to follow at that time, so turn it over to me. Thanks.
Yeah, so, thank you all for having us. My name's Liam Alfred. I'm the Marketing and Advertising Director for the Daily Campus. My general roles and responsibilities just include managing the advertisements, both online and in print, the print version of the paper. So, checking the daily advertisements, whether they're print classified or online, and as well as gaining new advertisers in the local area.
Hi everyone, I'm Ryan Grosso. I'm the Business Manager at the Daily Campus. I oversee advertising, circulation, as well as the business department with the receptionist. And I'm trying to help out here in here with payroll as well as budget.
Hi everybody, I'm Chris McKenna. I'm the Under Chief for the Daily Campus. I oversee print and photo operation. I supervise production and do payroll for the Daily Campus employees. And I manage the content that goes into paper every day, along with our photo storage secretary. And then manage the publishing, not we, Chris. So, thank you all for hearing our presentation today. We are the Daily Campus, the independent student newspaper of the University of Connecticut. We have been serving the University of Connecticut since 1896, when we were originally known as the STORES Agricultural College Lookout. And after multiple name changes and increase in publication frequency, we became the Connecticut Daily Campus in 1955. And now, again, as the Daily Campus, we have the largest circulation of any college newspaper in Connecticut, with 5,000 copies circulated daily. And we are the third largest college newspaper in Connecticut. So, our mission is to provide the UConn community with fair, accurate, relevant, and editorially independent content. And we take on the student interests as our own interests. We are chiefly aiming to provide students with what they want to see in our news, in print and online. And we also want to provide students with the best possible environment to learn about news media through the college environment here at UConn. We think we have the, or we believe we have the ability to do that through our, you know, daily production, where we cultivate skills such as copy editing, layout design on Adobe software, and just general writing ability for the purpose of providing news. We also have a digital department, which is more suited towards the future. Obviously, the media, the media in this world is changing to an ever-present, an ever-more digital platform. And on our website, we are able to provide that to our students, to our constituents, and our members who work in the digital platform have, get that experience of producing a website daily and updating that as well. So, our student fees, each student pays $20 per academic year, and we are not looking for a fee increase this fiscal year. We have, we still have a surplus that comes from the university owning our building. Previously, we owned and operated the building, now the university does, and that has given us a surplus of funds. So, for now, we are not looking for a fee increase. All UConn students are eligible to participate in our activities and our organization. 100% of the campus community takes advantage of that through our newspaper, again, circulated 5,000 copies daily and online on our website with all our stories published there as well. So, in terms of how we're spending our funds right now, primarily, most of our funds are being spent on printing the 5,000 copies of our paper. We print at Hartford Current. We have a contract with them, and that is a good chunk of our daily, or sorry, our yearly budget. And in terms of significant changes to our budget plan, our wages expense has slightly increased this year because we have changed our pay from lump sum to hourly for several positions, including digital production, layout design, and photographers. And some of our travel expenses has increased, have increased as well because we are increasing our, our use of professional development. We are sending our members to various conferences. We sent eight members to a national conference in Louisville, Kentucky in the fall, and we'll be sending six more members to a conference in the spring in New York City. These are College Media Association conferences, and they're very good opportunities for our members to experience professional development in the field and bring back some skills and knowledge to our own organization, which can then in turn be passed along to our constituents through our content. And otherwise, we've also increased our technological spending. We're always looking to improve in that front because, as I've mentioned in the past, we're looking for a more digital platform in the future, and that may require some better technology. Among those expenses is a server migration via Microsoft Office 365. We're now on the cloud for our content. We exclusively share content, either a story or a layout design through this software, and that is how we produce the paper daily. In addition, we're deciding to spend more in terms of, more on equipment in terms of cameras, microphones, podcasting equipment, all that kind of equipment, so that we can provide more multimedia, again, thinking of the future with regards to media. And with that, I'll transfer it over to Ryan to talk more about the line-by-line expenses.
Yeah, so one advantage of us printing the lead is our budget doesn't usually have a lot of changes on a yearly basis. So, Chris touched upon some of the changes, so I'll go over those with you now. Starting with line item 512 in advertising. Originally, as Chris mentioned, we thought that we'd actually have a much bigger drop in advertising than what actually occurred. So, in fiscal year '20, we originally budgeted for 12,000, but we had a better year than expected advertising at roughly $35,000. So, kind of being optimistic in fiscal year '20 and '21, keeping it around this year's actual. Liam's just going to talk about quickly just kind of how we managed to keep our, stay at a goal around $35,000 for advertising.
Yeah, so for the projection of fiscal year '20 being around 12,000, I can see where the previous financial managers had decided that, that decrease just because of the general industry of print advertising. But with our online content and the success of our website, along with our social media platforms on Facebook and Twitter for the most part, we have done a really impressive job getting national advertisements as well as local advertisements on our online basis. So, again, being optimistic for fiscal year '20 and '21, we are looking to keep them around the same because we see our, we see our print advertisements, we're down to a core of recurring advertisers, and we assume that they will, will be sticking around for the print advertisement, but we definitely see our online presence increasing. That's why we're keeping that around 33,000 range, as well as beginning to creep into promotional videos as advertising, as well as, as we gain the technology and, and begin to spread the online advertising, we're going to be keeping that around the same.
Moving down to line item 520.4, the participation sales. That stays consistent on a yearly basis. That's our banquet that we hold every end of the spring semester, whether it's April or May. That's at Nathan Allen here on campus. Usually budgeted around 50 people, so there's always interest for us to, there's always interest for participation sales there, so just kind of kept those consistent. And obviously, our highest source of revenue is at our student fees, which those numbers were presented to us by the Student Activity Fee Advisor Committee. Jumping down to line item 605 for postage. This is mostly where we, most postage expenses come from mailing out the papers, whether it's through grandparents or parents that their children or grandchildren, there's a story about them, or that their children or grandchildren wrote a story on. Usually, we just like to keep that in expenses because it's good, since we do only distribute mostly in the UConn area, it's always a plus to get to send it out to our family members. And it's clearly not a big expense for us. Line item 606 is our biggest expense, that is our printing cost. As Chris mentioned, we did cut them from 7,000 to 5,000 papers, which is why we went down from 126, roughly under 126,000 to 119,000. And not only, that jump in fiscal year 2021 is just a gradual 3% increase, which is usually the increase that we see in printing sales, especially at our amount of papers that we Line item 609 for subscriptions, that jumped up just a little bit, just because of the, that's again, just another gradual increase in subscriptions that we already hold. Some subscriptions include the Associated Press, where we get a lot of pictures that we can't take ourselves for more national news, or sometimes we add some just filler stories here and there, we think that there's a good national story. Squarespace is how we just kind of design and use our website. And Tribune is where we use the crossword and just kind of the comics and the font sections like that. The reason why that decreases in fiscal year 2021 is because of that. Tribune, we're not sure if that $2,000 cost is worth it, so we're monitoring that since we really only use it for the crosswords, but a lot of people do pick up the papers daily for that, so we just kind of see that as kind of a smart expense. Moving down to line item 615.1, our contractual services. First touched upon this, it did jump up to 13,000 this year from, last year's actually like 3,000, because it was a $10,000 expense moving to the cloud-based system, which really gives us much more storage that really nothing to worry about for a while, and it's much more secure than having a physical server if something were to go wrong. That was a one-time expense, and it jumps up to 8,000 just more for maintenance of the Line item 615.2 for contractual services, that's the expenses from the banquet for Nathan Allen. It's roughly 42,000 a semester, 4,200, excuse me, a semester. And the reason why that jumped up is since we had just got some feedback that some of the employees, we just think that we should put a little more money into the food package that we got, so that's really the reason why that increased about $900. Line item 612 for travel, Chris also touched upon this, this is really where we want to start chipping away at our surplus. So, this, for the S-VAC budget, this takes into account all of our professional development as well as sports travel. So, the reason why this almost doubled is we ended up sending double the amount of people from last year to the Louisville Conference because it's a national, nationally brand media convention. We thought that the advice that the, that the employees got was very constructive and in turn brought a lot of good things back to the Daily Campus. So, this is really where we want to start to chip away at the surplus because it's kind of just a really cool experience for the students to be able to go, to travel to Louisville and this semester in New York City, to kind of just further their own professional And line item 642 for student wages. Chris touched upon this, this was because we moved a lot of positions from lump sum to hourly. It ended up, we ended up realizing that a lot of students would have been making under minimum wage for the amount of time that they were working with lump sum here and there, so it was much, much smarter option to move them all to hourly, make sure that it was going to compensate correctly. So, other than that, as you can see down at the fund balance at the end of the year, we are trying to get that as close to zero as possible since we are using student fees. And again, since we do have such a big surplus from the university taking over the building, we're trying to just get that as low as possible by mostly professional development and just kind of updating a lot of that before then making it more commoditized.
And on top of all this, our Tier 3 Awareness, Familiarity, and Use surveys from last year showed that almost all respondents knew the Daily Campus, the UConn student newspaper, and about half of people used that, used our content in some capacity as their primary source of UConn news. This was a slight decrease from previous years, perhaps because of the circulation drop, but we've, in response, we have increased our science and technology content, which is what a lot of the students have been asking for. We've also increased our foray into video and other multimedia content. We produced several outstanding videos from UConn basketball's first night to a video from the Fall Concert, and there will be several other big videos to come. We've slowly but surely gotten our foot in the door with regards to that kind of content, which is exactly what many of the students have been asking for in this survey. And additionally, we're trying to increase our outreach, and we'll be spending a little bit more on promotional giveaways this year and years to come to push for more awareness of our content. Thank you very much.
Do you want to have any questions?
I have a sort of inter-related question about print and advertising. Roughly how much of the advertising you get now, revenue you get now is from print versus online?
I don't have the exact rate, do you have any? I wouldn't have it on with me here, but I would say, I would say in previous years it would be probably closer to 70/30 for print.
70 print, 30 online?
30, yeah. And I would say it's getting creeping up closer to about 50/50.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that's just because of whether it's our circulation or people just find online advertising more valuable. And to be honest, online advertising is cheaper as well. So, I think because it's a little bit cheaper, that's why it might not hold as much weight in, compared to print, but as people continue to do online advertising, it's, it's getting up closer to taking over print advertising.
And then presumably, if you were to decrease your print run even further, that would, that would reduce the revenue you could recover from ads because you wouldn't be able to charge as much as you're asking, right?
Well, yeah, that could, that would possibly reduce how much we charge for print advertisement, but again, if we're reducing our, our print advertising, then we're probably putting more investment into our online space, which would, which would hopefully increase our online advertising.
I mean, I'm just sort of interested in seeing how you are thinking about this because it's a challenge. I think every newspaper in the country faces that the print subscription, print runs are declining, online is increasing, but online is increasing quite as fast as the print is decreasing. And I mean, you're fortunate in that you've got a fund balance to run you out for a few years.
Right. Along with that, too, the reason that print advertising is kind of expensive is because only a couple of years ago, there could be 10 to 15 advertisements in a newspaper, so the demand ran up that price, whereas right now, our, our cost for online advertising is fairly cheap because it's, we're new into the space. So, if it does get to a point of where the demand is, is increasing and we do have to drop our prices for print advertising, that could also mean our online advertising prices may go up as well.
So, with respect to the management of the building, I'm interested in kind of getting your take on, I know that you had said that there's some money that you don't have to spend now, that you had budgeted. Do you have an idea of what that budget was that was budgeted for this, and the support of the building, and management of the building, and how you're technically using that now? I know you said you're trying to use it for professional development, but are there other things that you're using that number for?
I mean, if I can speak for a moment, let's move a little bit. We're using that surplus for pretty much everything from, I mean, printing costs are always going up year to year, just like the tariff on print on paper, like this past year with our contract, the Hartford Current went up, even though, so even though we went down 1,000 copies, the impact was not as big as we thought it would be because the printing costs have gone up. For example, wages have gone up as well, both, you know, over the years between like minimum wage increases and the fact that we have gone from lump sum to hourly, and we're actually going to be going hourly again in the future. For our, the last position that is lump sum is writer pay, so that will be going up and also contributing to our decrease in fund balance. There's just alongside with the travel and professional development and technology, we're really spending that fund balance on everything to make sure we're using our student fees appropriately. And once we get that surplus down, we'll be able to level off. But in terms of like how much was budgeted for that, the building, I think that's a few years back.
Yeah, I was just curious if you remember off talking about what that was, because I know that was a significant burn in order to make sure that the building's been paid with the revenue. So, I'd be interested to hear about. So, given that you have the fund balance, do you have a sense about how long you're going to be able to utilize the current process for how you're allocating funds before you're going to have to either cut back on program for the paper or how you're going to be able to increase revenues? How long is this model that you have to find out, like you have asked? Do you have a sense?
We wanted to see how the, how cutting back from 7,000 to 5,000 kind of affects, especially with regards to advertising, and it does look like that kind of as we drop the amount of papers that we print, we now have the figures that Liam can give to companies saying the amount of traffic that we get online, so it is still kind of new to us that we're not really sure of the potential of the actual, what the potential of our website brings now that we, you know, in printing per sole, we have a general idea of how advertising and the fee balance should keep us afloat, but kind of with, it's definitely an optimistic year for us since the online, especially display ads, have kind of kept us. So, as of right now, we're not really sure what the potential in the online advertising is since they are so new, but even with cutting back from 7,000 to 5,000, kind of letting the companies who advertise with us now weren't really as concerned with match-up at least from 7 to 5. So, obviously, as a newspaper, so we are trying to keep the just classic print products kind of out there for everyone for as long as we possibly can, but we definitely are aware of the fact that it is kind of a dying industry and that our website is already showing so much potential that we don't have an exact figure, but the, with even cutting back from 7,000 to 5,000, we're definitely optimistic that we can kind of keep, kind of be half and half on the paper and online.
Any other questions? Any other final comments on the three of you? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move ahead and get started. So, thank you both for being here. I'm your graduate student candidate. So, as you can see, we have our integrity to identify ourselves to you. If you wouldn't mind just identifying your name and role with the organization, that would be helpful. And if you can walk us through the information that you want to make sure the committee's aware of, and when you're finished with that, if the committee's got follow-up questions, we'll be happy to ask at that time.
Hi everyone, my name is Alma Pia. I'm a senior here at the University, and I'm the undergraduate student president and CEO of USU.
My name is Priyanka. I'm the current comptroller of the undergraduate student government as well as the chief financial officer.
So, thank you so much for having us. We'll just get right on to it. So, the undergraduate student government has existed at the University of Connecticut at STORES in various forms and under different names since 1894, all with the goal of representing and achieving on behalf of the student body. Where in its early beginnings, it consisted only of nine elected students who worked with faculty upon matters of the government of the college. Over the years, the organization was called the Student Organization, the Associated Student Government, Federal Students, Federation of Students and Service Organizations, and then finally became the undergraduate student government in 1980. Throughout this time, the organization adopted a constitution modeled to outline similarly to federal government with three branches, each having its best way of function. Although we started as a group of nine students, today, we are an organization with over 125 members who involve in a variety of different ways, whether it be serving on one of our three branches or as a member of a standing committee. The leaders of our organization such as the president, vice president, comptroller are democratically elected by the student body. Any free-paying undergraduate student at the University of Connecticut STORES campus is eligible to participate by running for election, joining one of our standing committees or branches, voting in elections, attending our events, and utilizing the resources and services we provide. Each full-time STORES undergraduate student pays $45 this per semester and $90 per academic soldier to fund U.S.U. initiatives for the student body. We would also not be able to keep so efficiently without the help of our three professional staff members and 17 student employees. Our structure serves to promote maximum reach to students and to facilitate communication of ideas and issues. U.S.U. is recognized by the University of Connecticut for trustees as one of the five governing bodies on campus. We are proud to be an organization that rotates the media of the university by decision-making processes, recognition, and advocacy for students. We voice student opinions from administration community and city legislature.
And to hear a few examples of how our structure pertains and how we try to do this as a body. So, our president and our vice president specifically work with administration to amend academic policy, to help students pursue degree, dual degree and fast track programs more easily. We're also working on completing restructuring our general education requirements, which include more experiential learning and research. We're also creating programs to teach faculty members about how to incorporate social media marketing and methods in their learning styles, as well as improving students with the tools to develop and improve their personal brand via the social media. And lastly, starting a U.S.U. alumni association, and through that raising money to create scholarships for students. Our comptroller, chief justice, and funding staff members have fulfilled during this past year to make sure funding requests are approved quickly and efficiently. They are working on rewriting policies and actually completing them already. And at times, we will be errors with the funding students parts, but as at U.S.U., we've made effort to ensure that all students know that appeals is a process and that they are able to get resources if needed. To make this process more transparent, we've also hired our funding staff in all those positions are to allocate, and those involve nine students. Our external affairs is a committee within our body, and this committee has been working closely with the director of advising to develop stronger advisory programs, establishing more research opportunities. Our next committee is the external affairs committee, which is working on developing strong relationships in the town of Mansfield. Student Development has led many diversity and inclusivity programs, such as Culture Center Open House and Vaggers Day. And lastly, our student services committee, which is our fourth and last committee, has recently partnered with the Judd Foundation to establish a four-year program that assesses campus mental health, resources, and works with us and the university to spearhead programs.
Even with everything we do, we always know that mission for improvement. So, after reviewing our last Tier 3 Awareness, Familiarity, and Use survey from spring 2018, we saw that there were areas of improvement that comes to bringing our organization, but we're also very proud of the feedback we received. We're so proud to say that over 80% of our students who took the survey know that our central mission was to really represent student interest. We also were glad to see that students liked our initiatives such as vital care packages, New York Times subscription, and free monthly products here on campus. Some areas of improvement include increasing transparency around how student fee money is being spent, as well as how our funding process works in our. And so, based on our last survey and our past budget narratives, we have taken some steps forward to really do this.
Right. One of the biggest projects we have taken on this year is with our funding policies. So, we completely revamped our policies, and these policies are what student groups get funding off from. And many of the categories have significantly increased. And already in spring 2019, after policies have been implemented, we've seen an increase of funding already. So, just trying to get our rollover going and make sure that we are spending as efficiently as possible. We've also been working on a new funding system as a whole.
We've also been working on a new funding system as a whole. Mobility is changing, we know that. So we're trying to make our inventory system more efficient as well as how students are requesting funding. We also want to create more awareness about funding and have more student groups request money. We've noticed a decline in how many student groups have requested funding and that we have realized that we are taking steps to make sure that student groups are requesting money in the future. And how we can create more awareness so that money is accessible to them. And we are definitely trying to do that with our funding policies as well as creating funding processes.
And so our goals for the future include bringing UHD alumni association through that with making a foundation, creating scholarships for students, continual review of our internal funding policy. Partnering with UCTV to create videos focused on fee money transparency and making that accessible to students. Creating, as Priyanka mentioned, a cohesive, user-friendly online funding system. You know, creating, helping students create informational budgets so that when they do request funding, they already have an idea of what they want to spend. We can better help them as we go through the process. We'd like to host more town halls and office hours for our funding staff so that they can have more time to meet students and answer any questions that we have. You know, continuing to update our website where right now we've been, our website's that more user funding students can access easily. And we're looking to add a few more funding staff positions so that we can better help students fulfill their requests. So what you've got is that I would like to dive into our numbers a little bit. And if you can see in our budgets, you will see that the majority of our budget goes to funding tier two organizations to help them accomplish their mission and vision. In fiscal year eighteen, in fiscal year eighteen, we had a revenue of about one point eight million and expenditures were about one point six. And so you can see that the largest expenditures came from the following, refreshments specifically for events and programs, contractual services, travel and equipment. And these items all come, are all allocated to choose, in order for them to fulfill their mission. And we will see that the ultimate goal increased over the years due to our recent change in policy that applies to all except contractual services. And we factored in new initiatives as well, so into our budget. So this would improve the jet initiative that we mentioned through the student services committee. That's about seven thousand dollars that we're contributing and that has been factored into the budget and our new website. So that has been factored in specifically to our contractual services, our new websites.
I think Alma at this point will take any questions.
Thank you. So can you give us a little bit of a better understanding about why the need to change your funding process? What was it about the process as it existed previously that you determined wasn't very effective or wasn't as effective as it could be? How did that, how did you make the changes to accommodate that then?
Sure. So a new funding system will have our informational budget, which all, what groups have to submit. It's basically a projection of how much they could be requesting from UHD for the following semester. As well as the funding request system as a whole, of how groups are submitting requests. And lastly, our inventory system. So our inventory system to track all equipment supplies that we are lending out to student groups and making sure that they are accountable for those items and that they know where they're, where they are and they've not been misplaced or given away. So those are all on different platforms. So the funding of funding is through UITS on IP of forms, but our informational budget is on Google Sheets. And then our inventory system is on a different program. So we wanted to make it as efficient for us and to make workflow easier. And that's why we decided to go through the new funding request system. We also wanted to be able to easily look back and see where students have submitted requests, where and where and how. And with the funding system that's very linear, we would be able to easily go back to years before and see that, oh, they've requested ten nights, two years ago, they should still have those within their club. And with our new question process here, we hope to.
Yeah, so I have a slightly different question, just sort of at the real macro level. For fiscal twenty and fiscal twenty-one, you're projecting an operating deficit of a hundred and ninety thousand to two hundred thousand dollars in each of those two years. Which is fine for fiscal twenty because you've got a bunch of reserves, also fine for fiscal twenty-one because you'll still have quite a few. But if you were to have that same debt, deposit in the following year, you wouldn't have funds. And so I'm just wondering, have you thought about whether that means in whatever that'd be fiscal twenty-two, you're gonna have to scale back programs a little bit? Or, or whether you might come and ask for a fee increase? Obviously, you're not doing that now. I'm just wondering, sort of projecting out in the future, would you have been thinking?
Great, exactly. I think we definitely have to change our environment and our climate. And I think that one of the biggest things we're hoping is that more groups are gonna request funding and that we are gonna have to limit on how many groups we can fund. And currently, if student groups advised by the policies and everything is within that day, we'll see funding. But in the future, I'm hoping that there's a, not a more tedious process, but a more selective process in how we are giving funding. Making sure the groups that really have those developed events for receiving the funding. So like you said, of course, we're gonna have a little shift of how we are funding student groups and our initiatives.
Okay, so make sure I understood then. What you're suggesting is that right now, if a recognized student group comes with a request, they're more or less guaranteed to get their request. And, but what you anticipate is in the future, there'd be, there'd be a bit more selectivity in which request would be, okay.
Yeah, I mean, at least for UHD, our organizational end as well, we will, you know, continue to promote more advocacy. So without having to spend extra money towards certain initiatives. This year is a little bit different just because we do have some really great programs that are coming. And especially with the New York Times, we've just recently converted our paper subscriptions to digital. So this is the one year that we'll have to account for that cost. And that's not something, you know, that's something that we can be factoring into the changes. You know, and, you know, the Jet Foundation, for example, that's a really great program that we're bringing to the university and that's gonna cover for four years. So that's not an extra cost that we account for every year. So this is kind of the year where it's a transition period. We're starting a lot of different programs. The website is being revamped, so that's not something we're anticipating as an additional cost for the next few years. So this, at least on UHD's end internally, this is like a kind of a turnover period. But, you know, we don't anticipate that we will be spending as much on our end. I've, you know, while I've spoken to the leaders in our organization, I've said, you know, make sure we're focusing on advocacy and, you know, make sure that we are being careful with what we spend. So we're looking towards that in the future and just focusing on that one so that we're not spending a lot.
Just to add, so our new funding policies have been implemented for spring twenty nineteen. And we still want to evaluate the statistics of how the new policies have increased funding, has not increased funding, and groups are requesting money. So those numbers are definitely gonna impact interest funding as well and how our, if our policies are gonna increase or were increasing and how those effects are as well.
So a question on payroll. So, you know, payroll expenses usually go up, so you probably have a plan. I think it's pretty consistent expenses. So as your fund balances go down, you probably will have a good handle on payroll and your other expenses is what I'm assuming. Because it seems like revenue is pretty much flat. I just want to make sure. I see your payroll expenses are going up, so isn't it the last three lines?
Yes, so you mean the wages, yes, for, yes. So I know when we were discussing this, they do go up a little bit, at least for student wages in particular, because we do have, we now have a funding staff. So before we used to have a board and they were, that was a good position. And so, you know, now we have a funding staff supervisor, so we gotta account for those wages as well. We're looking to hire, are there two more looking persons, I believe? So, I mean, those all factor in, so that's why there's a little bit of an increase there. And again, it's really just to promote efficiency for workflow and making sure that we are able to handle all of the funding requests we get, especially with now the rise in RSOs here on campus. And so there, that's why there's a little bit of an increase, at least for student, yes.
So can you just, can you talk a little bit about the decision you made, why you needed to make the decision to pay the funding board as opposed to? I know that they were volunteers in the past, a little bit of rationale or understanding, how do you keep to that decision?
Yeah, so with funding requests, there needs to be certain amount of accountability. And unfortunately, with unpaid volunteers, it's very difficult to hold that. And the students aren't paid, there's just more accountability with how efficient we are. So that's why we decided to narrow funding to positions.
Thank you very much. Members, have any tagged their phones, if you know who we are? If you wouldn't mind just introducing yourselves to the committee, tell us your role with the group and then walk us through your information. And when you're finished, if you have questions to follow, people do that at that point. So turn it over to you.
That's good. Like you said, we are the student board of governors, Subah for short. I'm Margot Rostino, I'm the VP of Finance.
My name is Adam, I'm the president of Subah for this week.
And I'm gonna just give you a little bit about who we are. We're a completely student-led organization, all medical volunteers, around two hundred and fifty members and forty-five of those full leadership positions. People join Subah to express their interest through programming and develop those leadership skills with, through a creative way. We have been on campus for over sixty-six years and alumni base of a thousand graduates. Actually, yesterday we just had a alumni brunch where like fifty or so of them came and we got to connect with them.
So yeah, as Margot said, Subah for short, we're an on-campus student organization that creates events and programs for undergraduate students at UConn. A lot of the events that we plan include major techniques tradition that are meant to enhance the college experience outside of the classroom. These are things like homecoming, campus concerts, major speakers intermediates, as well as special events and travel trips. We have six programming committees that plan roughly a hundred events in a school year. Let's see, a total of over eighty thousand students.
Yeah, so on, on the next page, you kind of see like our major events that we're trademarked for. You see those homecoming events, on the concerts, the film series, some of the lectures that we do and certain event. Those are the big things that we do amongst other things throughout the school year, like you said, about over a hundred events. So this is just a taste of that.
Our primary, primary form of communicating to students is through our social media and digital platforms increasingly as the years go on. So we see about six thousand students on our Instagram platform as well as we engage through other means as well. But our digital platforms are definitely the most effective way of communicating about our events.
So Subah obviously plans our own events, Subah completely run events. But we also have a lot of events that partner with other student organizations like Polack, NWS, the Radio Center to, with budget wise and just staffing wise and put on events very pretty bigger. And appeal to all different diverse range of students.
Our major goal, especially the one that we've identified just this past year, or had we been to focus on this past year. We want to make sure that students are getting the full extent of the services that they pay for. All of our expenses and all of the whole budget go directly to our events or indirectly on the infrastructure or the training or marketing for those events. While attendance isn't the only factor that we use to determine the success of our events, high attendance as well as membership is an indication that students get value out of our fee. For that reason, we strive to make our events as accessible as possible.
So as you can see from the budget that you submitted, we are going for a one dollar fee increase. And the reason for that, Subah hasn't seen a fee increase in many years. And just overall, before going into our main goal for the increase, things are just more expensive now. Contracts are more expensive now, in-house more expensive, lighting is more expensive, production costs, et cetera. But like I was saying, we want this high attendance and a lot of times ticket prices, which the required ticket prices that we need to have to put on our events are too high for students to attend. And it makes it inaccessible for them to enjoy and gain whatever our event is trying to get back.
So one of the, the main issues that in our goal that I highlighted earlier, like focus is on accessibility. And when we look at our paid events, specifically our concert programs, a lot of students are committed from being able to experience them just because of the high ticket cost. And that high ticket cost that many students aren't able to afford, they aren't able to attend. So what we've identified is, and our, our vision going into future school years is that once students pay our fee, the focus is that they'll be able to access our events without incurring the production costs. But right now, we're seeing students having to pay upwards of eighty-five dollars to attend an event outside of the fee that they already pay. And we understand as students ourselves that that is a huge burden for a lot of students at UConn. So our request for a one dollar increase is to reduce the burden that students have to incur within this school year, the ticket cost.
Right. The goal is to pay the one dollar, so something can be twenty dollars cheaper, ten dollars cheaper in the future. So these numbers and these, our opinions obviously rests ourselves, but are also found if the students attend our events. You can see quotes in the next page of how students wanna attend the concerts, wanna attend the travel trips, but they are too expensive, expensive for them. Like I was saying, our concerts can be expensive, our travel trips can be expensive. So it inhibits them from being able to enjoy and experience what we're putting on, which goes against what our mission is and what we want. Subah to be able to break to UConn's campus.
Sure. I wanted to highlight some of the, I mean, you could see the statistic of that survey we conducted just a few months ago. Six percent of students said that the reason that they did not attend our UConn Music Festival in April was because of the ticket prices. There was a lot of options. They could have cited that they weren't available, they could have cited that they didn't like the artists, but specifically six percent said that the tickets were too high. And then students on average said they would pay upwards of fifty-five dollars for a ticket. That is something that Margot and I, when we consider accessibility as well as socioeconomic status. And so some students are able to make that judgment and that assessment, but it's a lot of students at UConn that even at fifty-five dollars is way too expensive. So our goal is always to cater to the lower ends of the spectrum rather than the higher ends. And on the next page, you do see direct quotes. I think the biggest thing for us and the reason that we're here talking about this is when we do these surveys and we read these quotes, we take them to heart essentially. Because these are students that we can relate to and we do understand that the ticket cost can be a huge burden. As president and as VP of Finance, we know the background and understand where these ticket prices come from and why they are so expensive. But as students, we also understand that that is a high cost for even us.
Right. And I think it's unfortunate that fifty-five dollars, well, like most of our events aren't that expensive. Even last year, our film series that we put on, Friday the 3rd, it was a one dollar, or it was, they were paid to get, sorry, not one dollar. But this year, they are free and it's an eight hundred percent increase in attendance. So even events where it's a small cost, people are, if they don't go because it's still, they have to pay something extra. So we made them free. We saw a huge increase in attendance and that was just kind of a taste of if we got this fee increase, what we could do. And like, it shows that there will be an increase in attendance. People will come to our business more there cheaper or free.
And you can see that what Margot was just speaking about on the next page, with our film show, we went from two dollars to the free. And that has been super successful for that program. We've been able to incur that added cost to our budget, but when we look at our concert program, it's a little bit more challenging to do and that ticket cost and that attendance is so much higher. For our concerts, another example that we're looking at, the tickets were originally listed at forty dollars. After selling five hundred tickets and expecting to sell two thousand tickets, we needed to discount those tickets. And after discounting them is where we saw the ticket sales climb to two thousand. So naturally, we do see a correlation of the ticket price with the attendance. And in terms of accessibility, we do want as many people to go to our events and to be able to experience our events as possible. But with the production cost rising, as Margot was speaking about, for, it is becoming increasingly harder to do without raising ticket costs.
Right. So we've kind of talked about the steps we've taken already, even the cost for films. We've put on less events this year, tried to run higher quality, less quantity to save the money, make the tickets cheaper. But we come to a point where there's not a lot more we can do without having to increase it to our budget to help just keep moving this goal of making Subah's events more accessible or affordable for students to attend.
Yeah. So with the concert programs specifically, there was once a time we were in programming. Yeah, so with the concert programs specifically, there was once a time we were programming about three concerts, not about you programming three concerts a year. We eliminated one of those concerts to save those expenses, as Margot was talking about, focusing on the quality of the quantity. And we have taken steps like that in terms of other budgets. Moved to programming committees over the past year and relocated their budgets into other programs, as well as our fund balance and Margot and I this year have been working at brand sponsorships into our events. But like you were saying, it can only go so far. And with the $1 per semester increase, we see the potential to decrease our overall ticket cost by 33%, which can make a huge impact on the student budget within any given school year.
Thank you for your time.
So why stop at $1? If we're seeing such, you know, drafted gains from these reductions, do you think students would buy paying $2 or something like that for even, you know, below pricing or so what was your rationale?
So we had a discussion about this between Adam and I and advisors. We didn't really know where to begin because we haven't had a fee increase in so long. We didn't know, obviously, we can benefit off of a $10 fee increase for that. I think we want to start to see where this $1 can us. With 18,000 students, $1 is a big difference to a programming budget. And maybe a year from now or two years from now, they'd ask for that other dollar. But we're kind of taking it step at a time to see what we can do with this small step and then maybe a bigger step later on in the future.
Right, and also to add, I think we compare our concert programs specifically to, when we compare it to other schools, as well as things here, we compare it to athletics, where they repay fees to athletics as students, but we still have to pay game tickets. And we think that's an acceptable expectation for a concert program for students. We do think when we're looking at $85, that's a little bit different of a conversation. And I think while every student would love if our concert program is free, we would love that as well. We don't think that's a realistic goal, especially when we look at other schools. Most other schools, there's a student quote here where they talk about how other schools don't have outrageous ticket prices, is what they say, which is true. And they're looking at the range of like $20 to $30. We think that is more reasonable for us as well. Anything further, I think we are going to be getting to a point where we get to free and we'd be getting to increasing expenses just because. But a $1 per semester with that 33%, I think it's a good balance of not increasing the fee too much, but also doing a due diligence to increase the cost.
In the section where you talked about voices, you said that 6% of students cited not attending?
Yep.
As a reason why they didn't attend? What were some of the other reasons that they cited for not attending UConn?
Yeah, so about 2,000, does it say down there? A little over 2,000 students filled out that survey. One of the options was we did attend. That was a good majority, and then the other options were they didn't like the artist or did UConn because on Thursday, so they had class, they had other obligations and they couldn't attend really because they were busy.
So I want to follow up on the dollar increase in a slightly different way. So a dollar per semester, roughly 18,000 people paying it, that's $36,000. When I look at your financials, I recognize that because of emergencies, you want to maintain a decent fund balance. But on the other hand, a, a different way to approach the experiment would be for one year, not to increase the fee, but use a little bit of your fund balance and see if it had the anticipated effect. And then if it does come back and ask for the increase the following year or maybe even a larger increase.
Right, so that is, I think, a little bit of a dangerous play given that we had a couple of years ago, our fall concert.
Right.
Talent cancel, we had to dip in a lot to our fund balance to refund student tickets. We have, Adam and I, we worked with this budget, we have, we tried playing decreasing the fund balance and we have significantly decreased it. I think there's a safe number and I'm not sure if I, I'm not sure if I know what that number is, but we don't want to risk having nothing.
Right.
Not having a fund balance at all.
No, there's, you know, 36 out of, what is it, 140, so you'd still have over 100,000.
Yeah, I, I think we're just talking about events, specifically with this concert program, we're talking about events that see expenses, expenses of over 300,000 and currently revenue of upwards of 200,000. So like, we're talking about big numbers here. When something does go wrong, which Margot was saying it went wrong two years ago, things went wrong last year, it's clearly a trend here that they do go wrong. It is a significant risk to play. Because while last year, all the things that went wrong weren't as significant as canceling the entire show, but that entire show, we saw revenue of around $100,000 with the refund, all $100,000 while still incurring most of the expenses from that event. And that, let that happen again with this, with the lower fund balance, I think Subah would be in financial trouble.
Okay.
The other option too that happens oftentimes is Subah is asked to co-sponsor one-off events. And a lot of times those dollars are $25,000 to do whether it's to be participating with Manoa or another event that, you know, somebody is celebrating or across campus. So sometimes while that dollar now is up higher right now, it can be easily reduced by $25,000 based upon the co-sponsorships that we get asked for on one-off events or just haven't been any last year.
Okay, so from here, the information will be shared via the election process that will take place right before spring break. We'll have the question available for students to weigh in on. Again, that is not, that's just advisory to this committee. It's not definitive one way or the other depending upon what the response is. If the students overwhelmingly respond, that doesn't obligate the committee to accept that, nor if they reject it, doesn't obligate the committee to accept that either. It's just one piece of information the committee will use to forward our recommendation onto the central education. So, so you're free to share this with the student population, let them know why you're interested in having a fee increase and encouraging them to participate in the process. And then we will work with student activities to get that process actually online and available for all students to participate. Any questions about that, does it count? Any other final questions you would like to make? All right, thank you very much.
Sounds good. So my third question, come on, which order, may I ask your first choice?
That's great. Yes, can, can we, what are you talking about? I don't know if this feels boring or less intimidating. I'm not giving a show like two days.
All right, go ahead and get started. So this is WHS, so thank you both for being here. Members of the committee are here to hear your presentation. So if you, before you get started, if you mind sharing your name and your responsibility with your organization, walk us through the information that you want to make sure we're aware of. And then if you have, if we have questions, when you're finished, we'll follow up at that point. Thanks for being here.
So I'm Amanda Minicucci, I'm the general manager at WHS.
I'm Sheri Tal, I'm the operations manager at WHS.
All right, so getting started, since the 1940s, WHS has operated as a non-commercial student-run FM radio station. And today, we currently operate on 91.7 FM, online at WHS2 and online at WHS Sports. All of our streams are also available as audio players on our website, whs.org. The main purpose outside of operating our FCC license, we have to be able to provide an experiential learning environment for students. That's very important to us, and we do that through radio broadcasting and multimedia production. Run by a stu, 20 student operations board, we have content creation through many departments such as promotions, events, sports, news, live production, music, multimedia, and podcasting in our top departments. We've been branching out quite a bit in the last few years. Our leadership positions at the head of each of those departments also engage students in career development, taking on diverse responsibilities that can prepare them to become competitive candidates in the job market later on after graduation. Our extensive coverage of UConn Huskies provides in-depth playback-like coverage for women's and men's basketball, women's and men's soccer, baseball, softball, field hockey, and ice hockey, and basically any other sport that we offer that someone is willing to cover that day. Our events vary from lectures to concerts, appealing to diverse interests in both music and culture on campus. And probably over the last two years, we have increased our staff's interest in new media departments such as podcasting, live production, multimedia, news broadcasting, the zine, which is our preform art magazine, and music, of course. Greatly showing WHS has been emerging with technology innovations alongside our traditional broadcasting. Continuing on this upward trend, we have to make sure that we're constantly upgrading and evolving in times, technology moves very fast. So we're going to be upgrading our studios and Sheri will be talking about that a little bit more in depth, with the budget lines. So we'll talk about that shortly. By running regular training classes and also creating workshops for students and for the surrounding community members, we're able to reach out to the whole general campus community and beyond, and we're consistently working to spread our knowledge and depth of multimedia and resources for our studios and our equipment. In the past fall semester, we were able to tally up all of our active members. We have about 150 active members currently overlapping in different departments, becoming DJs, sportscasters, newscasters, audio engineers, and content producers of all the different departments I've mentioned a couple of times. Serving as a community station, we also have an opportunity to invite people from the surrounding community in, so we have approximately 50 members that are graduate students, alumni, UConn faculty and staff, and individuals from the surrounding community. So we're very pleased to be branching out into all these different new media resources and continuing to reach a broad audience.
So continue our license, WHS has a fantastic tower on top of Busby Hill on campus, which keeps us live and FCC compliant. So first and foremost, we have to budget for insurance payments and maintain a minimum of $70,000 in our fund balance in case of a catastrophic event to our tower or any other unforeseen circumstances. That's always in the back of our minds, especially as we develop the budget angle. As you can see at our first large line item, line 515 contractual services, we actually rent out space on our tower to clients, including Verizon, AT&amp;T, and Connecticut Public Radio. In fiscal year 2019, our predicted amount is higher than our actuals for fiscal year 2018 because the university changed our billing cycles from quarterly to monthly bill. However, we've had to adjust that number again to reflect the loss of Spock as one of our towers, tower clients this year. At the bottom of our revenue, you'll see line item 546, interest. And this is just an estimate based on interest earned from money in our student activities account. And you can't really predict that number, so we use a conservative estimate. Sometimes it's higher, sometimes it's lower. Moving on to our expenditures, line 603, gifts, shows an increase of about $1,500 as we've implemented an incentive program for our diligent volunteers. Since we don't financially compensate anyone for, you know, their time and their content, we've implemented the system based on number of committed hours to reward those who have been dedicated to WHS, as well as incentivize newer members to get involved in departments or on the radio. And we don't actually give any of these incentives to individuals who are paid, these are strictly for volunteer hours. We've increased line 606, printing, to develop more posters and flyers on campus. And the yearly awareness familiarity and youth survey that's sent out to all the students on campus, we received feedback that many students actually didn't know where we were on campus and were unfamiliar with how many opportunities we provide to them. So we wanted to increase our publicity that students can maximize their benefits of their general activities. We also spend more money, as Amanda mentioned, we have our zine committee, which is our preform magazine. And so we were able to publish last semester and will publish for the coming semester as well. We decreased line 607 promotional items because we recently developed a branding guide to keep our board more consciously aware of the environment, refraining from cheap giveaways that people, you know, just throw away and don't continuously keep. And we want all of our promotional materials to have a strong purpose and/or be useful and produced by our recipients. Same goes for line 608, 0.1 organizational refreshments. Well, we would love to have lunch at every meeting. We don't want to be wasteful and being stewards of student funds, we gather alms there. We've increased our budget on line 608.2 and 610.2 to be more inclusive and organized larger events such as our new training meet and greet, where last semester we had over 100 students pass broadcasting exams, staff holiday gatherings, and your live finals playlist, which is hosted in May. At line 624, travel, we just want to point out that there is a fluctuation there since it depends on the success of UConn athletics. So if they have a better season, then there's more games to cover. And whether or not we travel to conferences or tournaments, consequently. When we're not on the road and back in our studios, we significantly prioritize our students by having our streams available on mobile applications through a collaboration app called Radio FX and our own FM channel, which leads to our most significant increases in the next few years. So our studio upgrade, which is lines 625 and 626, equipment, we estimate to be 150,000 for the fiscal year 2020. There's a three-year window of our technology being obsolete of any system upgrade capacity or repairs, and through the realization of this, we've started the process to ensure as we transition into new studio equipment and we're planning on traveling to national conferences to research and demonstrate new equipment and just see what's available. We're striving to keep up with that strategic pace in technology and as well as provide an educational experience to our members. Line 640 is business taxes, so that just represents the taxes you pay on our income from our tower clients. And 642 is student wages. They have increased to provide more opportunities for students who may have not otherwise been able to be involved due to personal financial constraints. And we recently added assistant positions this year, as Amanda said, we have over 20 students on. At the end of all of this, our fund balance is maintained at about $350,000. We will gradually draw this down to about $130,000 by fiscal year 2021 using the funds for promotions, events, upgrades through our website, data storage, and of course, the largest budgeted item, which I mentioned in fiscal year 2020, our studio upgrade. By increasing these line items, we are increasing WHS's quality of on-air content and on-ground promotion in order to maintain consistency in the student size as well as provide a valuable hands-on training education.
So I had a question about the capital equipment. You're, so basically every three years, things get obsolete, you need to replace the?
No, so we've actually had this equipment for over 10 years. And it's come to the point where the company changed hands three times. And it got to the point where the final company that now holds all that technology said, we're going to go a different route and create a different system. So they're getting rid of that technology. There's only two guys in the whole country that know how to repair our current system. So once they retire, we'll have nothing. So we won't be changing this over every three years. It just happens that our particular technology is reaching its expiration.
Got it, so that, that makes perfect sense, but the, the, my follow-up was then is, do you have sort of a plan to incrementally replace technology year to year as, like, so in the graduate school, we have, have the staff on a rotation so that roughly, you know, roughly 25% of the staff get new computers this year, the next 25 next year, and so on. You have something like that as well?
We've been starting to do a little bit of equipment upgrades as simple things break down, like some of the computers we replaced in the past couple of years. We replace headphones non-stop and those simple things.
Right.
But unfortunately, the board and, which is, like, with all the speakers and everything yet, and a lot of the equipment that hooks into that are, all have to be purchased at the same time because they're mutually compatible. If we got different pieces of technology, it'd just be a lot of jibbering and interming, make everything work.
Okay.
So do you have an ideal fund balance in your mind, like what would be?
At a bare minimum, the $70,000, which is what Sheri said for the tower. So in case anything were to happen to it, that's the replacement cost for that tower. And then on that, $130 seems to be a pretty comfortable number for us, but we could potentially draw that down perhaps fiscal year 2021. But at least that's $70,000. Maybe about $100.
Thank you.
Thank you both for being here. So if the members of the committee are here to hear your presentation, if you wouldn't mind just introducing yourselves and telling us your role with the organization, walk us through the information you want to share with us. And then when you're finished, if you have questions to follow up on, we'll be happy to do that. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having us. So hi everyone, my name is Jule, I'm the general manager of UConn Student Listening Station.
I'm Connor Mitchell, I'm the assistant general manager at CTV. And you can see we passed up this packet, it's just supplemental information if you're going to follow along, excuse me.
UCTV is a network creators who are using digital media to tell stories and make UConn community closer together. The story UCTV started 28 years ago. It was found as UConn Television Club in 1991, by undergraduate students who has a vision to become resource for students and their organization to engage with broader UConn communities through videos. Today, UCTV strive to be the source of information, entertainment and free expression for undergraduate student body, while creating engaging content for our constituents. Provide numerous learning opportunities for all the undergraduate students who are interested in broadcast, entertainment and film production. After a series of leadership changes, right now, our UCTV board consists of five executive board members and nine production board members. So that, these 40 board members decide the strategic future of UCTV. UCTV currently has 150 members for our seven departments. Any undergraduate student can join UCTV. There's no prior experience required. We provide all necessary training and equipment to enable members to make fun and exciting videos for constituents to enjoy. By cultivating an active member creator community, UCTV benefits constituents in streaming for value. The most direct constituent benefit is our free service for all undergraduate student groups. In the past year, UC SPEN and UCTV Live Department has recorded or livestreamed more than 200 events for over 100 student groups and affiliate departments. And our advertising department has created almost 70 promotion videos for dozens of student groups. These three departments not only benefit students by documenting precious UConn memories, but also connect students, alumni and family closer together almost real time. Right now, our UCTV Live Department is broadcasting this public hearing through internet to all undergraduate student body to access. One of our proudest contributions to UConn community is that we have successfully streamed the full 18-hour Husky Song Dance Marathon twice. Last year, the streaming generated 7,000 views from UConn students, donors, friends and families in over 25 countries. We are honored to help students and friends to witness the climax of events which raised more than $1 million to Connecticut Children's Medical Center. UCTV also creates extensive content related to UConn student life. UCTV Sports and News create more than 1,000 minutes of content every year. The Sport Department provides coverage for a wide variety of sports teams, both home and away. They also interview students, student athletes and provide in-depth analysis about school and national sport topics. They have weekly broadcasts, they have different shows. UCTV News travels across campus and applies state to film stories relevant to UConn community. The News Department keeps constituents informed about local, state and national news stories with professional journalistic news reports and analysis. Last but not least, by being a creative resource in our, for all students, UC Film and Entertainment Department provide unique original content for students to enjoy. The Entertainment Department focuses on short-form engaging content. And UC Film creates festival-quality short films using professional cinematography equipment. The UC Film recent production, ADZ, was made to 13 different film festivals, both in United States and abroad. This professional-grade production possibly represents UConn's talented and creative students nationwide. UC Film currently has eight different short films in various stages of production. UCTV's multifaceted approach to visual media make us a unique and important resource for all of UConn students. We are constantly striving to grow and improve, and our budget expenditures show that. Model projects are underway to keep our equipment and studio up to the industry standard. We are also increasing our viewership and grow our presence on campus. Connor will walk you through some of these projects and how they affect others.
Yeah, as Juwol said, I'll just walk through some of the current projects and expenditures, sort of the bigger line items on the budget right now, if you're following along in the packet on the very last page. So I'll start with one of our biggest projects, which is our studio renovation project. So we budgeted about 150,000 split between contractual services and equipment capital for this project. Basically, these are, you know, standard updates to keep our studio up to date. Things like replacing our cameras, replacing our lighting, replacing our sets. Keeping things relevant and up to date for both our members to learn better and our constituents to get better looking content. And in addition to that, we are also just doing general equipment updates to UCTV, things like cameras, accessories to go with those cameras, tripods, laptops, things like that. So those are just general, you know, sort of common sense upgrades, just to keep within industry standards. And also, one of our bigger expenditures in the updates of equipment is the, our recent acquisition of the UConn Film Club, now known as UC Film. So we're in the process right now of purchasing about $12,000 worth of assets from USG that were previously owned by the club in order to, you know, make sure our cinematography equipment is up to date. Another big project that we're working on this year under contractual services is our digitization of archive tapes. So obviously, technology has changed a lot over the last few decades and the film industry is no exception to that. It really was not that long ago that we were physically cutting tapes out of tape deck to do our editing. And we still have a lot of those old tapes, but we have no way to access them right now. So we've decided to invest a little bit in digitizing those tapes so we can learn more about our history, you know, open up new content opportunities and maybe clear out some of the clutter, some of those old VHS tapes that go up a lot of space. Additionally, we have a pilot program this year for non-student staff for the first time in our history. This involved doing an hour sharing program with WHU S, our dear employee Jason McMullin. He's just been an excellent resource for us. We wanted to test out what a non-student staff situation would be like. So he's been there to generally advise us on lots of different technical projects that we have going on, such as the studio renovation and equipment updates. And also, he's a great resource for just managing a tier-three organization because he's been working with WHU S for so long. So we started that program this year and we do budget for that in future years to have it happen to student staff on our wages. Additionally, we're sort of revamping and modernizing our marketing and advertising strategy this year. In order to, you know, reach your constituents, you have to meet them where they are, basically. So there's a few different ways that we've decided to go about that. Obviously, we have to meet them in the physical spaces that they're occupying, so things like advertising on campus, meeting them at events that they're going to. We also need to meet them in the digital spaces that they're spending a lot of time in. So that involves social media and the such. So the expense code is relevant to our new marketing and advertising strategy, our co-sponsorships, namely working with Supag on the homecoming events. Additionally, printing expenses for promotional materials, digital and physical advertising, so things like bus ads, but also, you know, social media advertising and refreshments for events that we're putting out for constituents. And sort of going along with that, you know, the idea of increasing our presence, we're also investing in a new program to have campus displays across the campus showing UCTV content. So right now, we've done this in the student union food court and we're in talks with other places such as the journalism department to try to make sure that, again, we're meeting people where they are. We're, you know, making sure that our content is as accessible to them as possible and they can learn about us, whether they just want to watch our content or whether they want to actually join and get involved with UCTV. Just to wrap up here, just obviously every tier-three organization is being affected by the changes to the billing system this year. We're from quarterly billing to monthly billing. But we in particular have a few line items that are particularly affected by that. So the first one, under contractual services, we are actually paying for three years' worth of our Associated Press subscription, all in fiscal year 19. And that basically comes down to the Associated Press forgot to bill us for a few years. They're a top-class news organization, but their billing department is kind of channeled, so we ended up having that expense three times this year. Additionally, our refreshments, in fiscal year 18, the Refreshments Organization expense code ended up being artificially lower. So basically, at the end of each year, we have a banquet at the end of the spring semester to celebrate achievements. Much of that expense goes under Refreshments. But in fiscal year 18, that banquet ended up being pushed to fiscal year 19. However, the banquet from the year before was not billed in 18. So basically, there's no banquets in that year, but there's two banquets this year because of the changes to the monthly billing system. So that fiscal year 18 just looks particularly low and it looks like a big jump, but it's really just shifting around in that money. Additionally, travel expenses are particularly high in the fourth quarter. So when you double count that with the changes again to the billing system, that ends up looking artificially high this year. That's mostly because of the way that some of the conferences that are relevant to our industry are scheduled and also end-of-year athletic tournaments, namely the American Athletic Conference Tournaments and the Women's Final Four for basketball. That's pretty much my main spiel about the budget. If you have any more questions about any of the line items, we're happy to go over it. But yeah, right now, we'll just go through up to questions.
Do you have questions?
Thank you both for being here. This is Nutmeg Publishing. So the committee here is ready to listen to the presentation you have. So we're going to ask if you would first identify who you are and your role with the organization. Walk us through the information you want to make sure the committee is aware of. And then if you have questions, when you're finished, we'll follow up at that point.
Hello, thank you for having us here today. My name is Juwol Hawa, I'm the head permission for Nutmeg.
Yep, and I'm Sam Barlow, I'm the business manager for Nutmeg Publishing.
So to begin, I need to do a little bit of history of Nutmeg Yearbook. So the Nutmeg Yearbook was established in 1915 and separated from the Outbook, which was the agricultural college's yearly publication. Nutmeg had to see permission to place on student activities when graduating. Some of these we get to receive their book for free, which still holds for today. Nutmeg also needs their yearbook upon graduation, but they also have the opportunity to have their portrait of here in the yearbook for free. And then there's like an additional cost if they want to buy the print from that. In the spring of 2015, Nutmeg reorganized, became Nutmeg Publishing in order to reflect in the addition of our quarterly magazine publication, which tried to do like one a semester. With the first documented student life diversity, campus culture and important events on campus. Also, it's in order to acknowledge that our magazine is online, so it's not a paper. To 2017, to save money, we restructured the magazine into what a semestral publication it was. I think we first started up two times a semester. We use the magazine to advertise for the yearbook, usually with sneak peeks for what might be in the yearbook. What will cover like prominent events on campus? And this is in order to increase our campus presence, because that's been the issue with Nutmeg in the past as far as visibility on campus and knowing what Nutmeg Publishing is and now we publish here. So our mission statement is that Nutmeg is committed to serving its constituents, people serving, highlighting the nature of the contest, traditions and cultures, your yearbook and semester events and applications. Nutmeg is staffed by a diverse group of creative and motivating students who work on design, layout, copy editing, photo photography, photo edit and image selection, recording and writing. We have between 25 and 30 members, we're still hiring, so it fluctuates depending on the semester. So basically, our structure is the editor chief, the yearbook managing editor, the magazine managing editor and the business manager all make up the executive board. And then we have our marketing coordinator, who is kind of a liaison between the board and like the staff for publicity. And then we have our senior staff, which is made up of our photo editor, our copy editor and our creative director. Our photo editor oversees photographers, our copy editor oversees the writers and our creative director oversees the designers. And they also facilitate communication between the super staff. They facilitate communication between the executive board and our general members, which is very helpful. So they're like kind of the group. And so we serve our staff members by providing experience and diverse skills in publishing and leadership. Currently, as far as the funds we're spending now, the majority of Nutmeg's expenses for our association will be the publishing and yearbook. The expenses are right now in a contract with our publishing company, Wallsworth. This contract is renewed yearly and it's bid on every three years. The second highest expenditure in funds is allocated for staff payroll. These two expenses account for approximately 90% of the world's emissions. Nutmeg also budgets for smaller expenses such as like party supplies. We have a staff banquet at the end of each year, we budget for that. And in addition to like photography and equipment needs, because we do try to provide cameras and memory cards and such for our photographers. And in addition, we also cover travel expenses for our sports photographer if the men are doing basketball, makes it to kind of four. In addition, we also spend relatively small amounts of our budget on like advertising and promotional items. You'll see that we spend money that's passed here on a uniform for our staff because we're giving events, they're around the basketball and a lot of people will be like, "Who are you?" Like when they say, "Oh, I'm with Nutmeg," people won't know. So the shirt gives them authenticity in that regard. And while we do not host events, we take low-cost approaches, such as table and fires and social media.
So from the business end of things, just to highlight a couple key changes or notable things. So first of all, we do pay or offer credit for all of our positions. So the opportunity to work and participate in Nutmeg for credit is a new one this year. And that's kind of a joint effort to appeal to more students, but also to lower our student wages a little bit. So before we see how that pans out, we have maintained the same student wage expenses budget and we're hoping to kind of get a better idea at the end of this year if we can expect this system to reduce student wages in the future. And if so, then we will adjust the budget accordingly, but to stay conservative, we've kept it at $24,000, which approximately matches last year's. We have also recently adapted, we switched from lump sum to hourly payroll just to kind of better conform with student labor regulations. It's much more easy to track and make sure that there are no violations. And we go about doing things that way. Just in general, to address any questions about the need to provide some kind of compensation, whether it's credit or money for students, we just find it of the nature of Nutmeg, especially with deadlines and needing people to kind of produce high-quality work. It just works better if you don't rely on a volunteer-based system. The other big thing to notice, and you can see it under 615.2 contractual services expenses, is due to last year's yearbooks and the previous year's yearbook not being completed by the previous executive board, we are now in a position where we are trying to kind of tie to loose ends on the previous two years' yearbooks and also complete this year's yearbook in entirety. And the result of that would be the publishing cost of two yearbooks being expensed within this fiscal year. So that is the reason for essentially doubling of the contractual services expense. Besides that, you'll see 6512 under revenues for advertising. We have been putting more effort into placing ads, so that is the reason for the appearance of that. We are offering ad space to companies and parents to place advertisements in the yearbook in exchange for money. The decrease in interest, so 546 under revenues. So the reason that was so high in the fiscal year 2018 was due to the large fund balance that we accrued from not spending money on producing the yearbook. So we only pay Wallsworth once they produce the book. Two years of delay in book production meant that we accrued a relatively large fund balance of, you know, over $200,000, which, you know, interest is a function of that balance. So that was kind of an animal a year, but we've adjusted that back down to 750, which is more of what we can expect based on the decrease that we paid for two this year. And that is essentially all of the most notable changes. But I'm happy to answer any questions about any additional changes that you might be curious about.
I know that you have, in previous years, the committee has been asked to consider maybe you're not suggesting that this year, but potentially in future years. Can you talk a little bit about what your thoughts are regarding the fee and whether or not what you have sufficient capital to be able to spend?
Certainly. So this year, we actually have recently, it's the first year of our renegotiated contract with Wallsworth. So So before we go asking for additional spending, we want to see how this new contract affects our deficit after we came through these yearbooks. And then if we're able to shrink that deficit down under the new deal, then we probably see a need to ask for a fee increase if we don't have any extremely ambitious projects or expense needs at the time. But if under that new deal, we fail to shrink the deficit, then we will recommend a future executive board to ask for a fee increase.
Yeah, just to add to that, we're hoping that the yearbook, all three yearbooks will be published by this coming September, twelfth, October time period. Therefore, we want the next exec board to have that purpose, because it's just a lot of work to try to make sure, and as Sam was saying, with the financial semantics, that we don't want to like lose money for the organization or overload our own student staff and ourselves with like an increase in addition to.
So have you been able to reduce the expenses related to mailing the books? Although, of course, you know that in the past, there were things that were sold or, you know, mailed out and then returned because the addresses weren't correct. So you worked on that process to ensure that the addresses are accurate and things like that for the students who are going to be receiving the books?
So that is something we've been trying to work with Wallsworth about. A challenging aspect of it is a lot of instances that occurs is the case of international students where, for example, China specifically seems to be an issue with addresses. It's actually them being so long, they get cut off on a standard label, and then that costs them to send back to us. So it's somewhat of a tricky challenge for us, but we've been working with them to have that huge bunch of issues going forward.
I think that might be challenging too because of the delay. I mean, it's now how many years since Mike used track of some of these students? And, you know, you can reach out, go to registrar's office to make sure that they have any change of record for information.
We have, most recent lists are from this like past two months, so with Nutmeg, it should be different at this point.
Additionally, we've also started working with the business office to set up an online marketplace platform where students can go in and purchase additional books from past years. So if there wasn't an issue with them having receiving it, they'd want additional author of, you know, they're the platform, I think, which they can acquire.
We also understand that a lot of the books get sent back, and we are actually required to like order a certain amount for our office and to get to cultural centers, like that kind of thing. And due to that, we, sorry, that was a security flaw. Basically, the deficit. I'm sorry, I forgot.
Well, I think what it's getting at is we find a way to usually to appropriate a lot of these extra books because.
Yeah, we're all less, I'm sorry, that's what I meant. We're all less than they have in the past years. Sorry.
And then we do find ways, like a lot of times, there's offices that haven't owned to ask for a book. So there'll be cultural centers or there's student offices that will be happy to utilize them, just because they have not had to ask for one in the first place, but they're happy to have it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Student Senate, just thank you both for being here. So members of the committee are here to hear your presentation. If you wouldn't mind just introducing yourselves first to the committee and then take us through the information you want to make sure we're aware of, and if we have questions when we're finished, we'll be happy to follow up at that point.
All right, so I'm Justin May, and I'm the president of the Graduate Student Senate.
Kevin Boyd, I'm the treasurer and CFO of the Graduate Student Senate.
So don't make your changes from last year, but just to give a quick recap. So the mission of the Graduate Student Senate is multiple purposes. So one, we represent the graduate student committee, graduate student community within the larger university committee. We serve as an advocate for graduate students, and we serve as a sort of go-between between the administration and students. You know, if there's any student concerns, they will be addressed. We make sure that these are concerns that are heard by the administration and the care. We try to provide services to meet the needs of graduate students on campuses. I'll elaborate a little bit on those services in a moment. We also try to encourage and enhance cooperation between graduate students of different departments or academic disciplines, or even between different cultural groups to come together and socialize and essentially work together. And just in general, we're trying to enrich a lot of graduate students. So, sorry. So some of the resources that we give for graduates that are quite popular is the short-term loan program. So that's the one where we loan at no interest or no fees to graduate students, to fifteen hundred, I think, two months, three months, where graduate students find that they're in need of disagreement funding or something like that, whether it's R that didn't come through, or T that didn't come through, or anything like that, to have access to this fund. We also have our more traditional Senate meetings, about once every three weeks, where senators from different academic departments, as well as any graduate students who are interested in attending, basically come and the department community have voice to their concerns or anything that they have. And also, we have coffee hours where I just sit in the office, and if any graduate student wants to come and talk to me, or is a person, or private, or is better for a schedule, then they can come and speak with me. For our events that we hold on campus, we have quite a few that are quite popular. Graduate students will get good attendance for those. So we have a welcome back barbecue, just usually at the beginning of the fall semester, just to welcome everybody back to the summer. We usually have a Halloween party, a Thanksgiving lunch, which is really popular for international students, since they're usually here for the holidays. We do have graduate student formal in the spring, as well as end-of-year barbecues and various other events throughout the year. And in addition to graduate, Senate-run events, we also support numerous tier-two groups on campus. These are always graduate student groups as well, and essentially, they run events which we fund up with. So basically, it enriches the number of activities and other events going on on campus, specifically catering to graduate students.
Michael, so I'll walk you through the basic overview of our financial situation and where a lot of our money comes from and goes. Our only real source of income is the student piece, which brings, gives us an operating budget of somewhere around a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Over half of that is then distributed out to the various tier-two groups of graduate students, of which, for this coming year, twenty-three of them have applied full of funding. Another roughly thirty percent goes to GSS-run activities, like the ones Justin mentioned, such as our Thanksgiving dinner, back to, you know, back to the school barbecue, et cetera. And the rest is earmarked for our operating expenses, such as wages for our administrative assistant, who is also a graduate student. And so to the expense chart, because most of our expenses are funding activities, both our own and other groups, the biggest expense and the one that takes up almost three-quarters of our budget is for Refreshments. Contractual services, supplies, and travel make up most of the rest of that. Travel could include, sometimes a lot of groups have speakers that come in and need their travel reimbursed, and a lot of contractual services is that too. I don't have anything, I don't have much of note to point out that's changed for our expenses, except for we've shifted quite a lot out of wages and into travel for the coming years. And that reflects a policy that was put in place by previous administration, that the executive board, which was paid but with stipend, is now instead given a travel award in which, you know, to go learn some things and bring back to the graduate community to enrich them. For our long-term plan, we have a bit more money as a balance at around eighty thousand than we need. And so we have accordingly planned to increase expenditures for the next three or so years to get that down to, we imagine a reasonable number would be around twenty thousand. We would like to keep that sort of buffer for a couple reasons. One is to, in case we need to replenish our student loan fund. Another is that the spending from the tier-two groups can be somewhat volatile, and so we always project and allow them more than we have to give them. And so we need a buffer in case they spend more money than we anticipate. And we plan to do this slowly in roughly twenty thousand increments over the next three years, so that when we are down to what we consider to be an acceptable fund, that cutting down on activities after that isn't too drastic a change for tier-two groups that expect a relatively consistent budget from year to year. That's about all I've got in terms of our finances.
No, I mean, I appreciate you addressing what's the idea of fund balance, because I do think there's always, I mean, it looks like you're consciously reducing that, but to what point do you identify it? You said twenty thousand expenses.
So that's based on advice that we received enough to cover our first event for the semester, just in case there's a delay in receiving the funding. Also, to replace, we got a bit of the office, for example, just to replace the equipment and items that we have there, things of that nature, and also have them offered over the tier-two. Sometimes they spend more than we expect them to spend in us.
So you said that there's twenty-three active organizations now, cultural organizations?
So that's groups that formally apply for, so we have two methods of funding groups. There's a yearly budget where they essentially submit a budget this year for next year's fall-to-spring budget, and then we also have a special allocation mechanism where they just apply a few weeks before their event. So for the groups that formally apply, it's, I think, twenty-three, sounds right. Now, that doesn't mean that we don't, we only support twenty-three. We can actually support more than that, where groups don't necessarily file for a budget, but instead they just do a special allocation mechanism a few weeks before their event. There are some benefits and disadvantages to that. When you do a special allocation, you usually have a better idea what the cost is going to be, because it's just a few weeks away, whereas with a projected budget like this, it can be almost a year away if it's in spring. So that's one benefit. And some groups choose to just do like that. They don't like the hassle, I guess, of having to apply for a formal budget, so just choose to go with special allocations.
Another thing to add to that is I was listening earlier in these hearings about, you know, USG, who kind of have unlimited, not an unlimited spending policy, but something resembling that, whereas where, you know, if a group, you know, has a reasonable accommodation, then the funding is allocated. We do have a system in place, a financial committee made up of graduate students, you know, part of members of the Senate, who, you know, determine the annual budget. And so to Justin's point about us being able to, you know, support an arbitrary number of groups, we can by, you know, just at the time of determining the budgets, you know, we have what we think is our cap on spending, and then we distribute it accordingly to however many groups apply.
So are there a lot of groups that do the, you know, the one-off events kind of thing as opposed to the whole, annual allocation?
So I think, so we probably have around, typically around twenty-five, twenty-five to twenty-nine every year that apply for the formal budget, probably a handful of additional groups that also go to special allocation. Now, the other thing is with the special allocation, so if you are a new group and you're starting up now, so you can't really have funding through the yearly allocations just because it was last year and you guys aren't new. So this, so we always getting, we're always getting a couple of new groups up here and there as well. I mean, I think the chemistry group was new.
Yes.
And then there's another group that I, word on the street was, when they were trying to start up a group and they're trying to find Eboard members for that group.
Another thing is that there's usually really high turnover in terms of people running the tier-two groups, and they don't always have their stuff together come budget time. And so if they're in good standing with us otherwise, you know, they've been attending to the Senate meetings, we want to give them an avenue for, say, a new, you know, executive board or group of students running their organization to have funding at some point during the year if the previous administrations dropped the ball.
I think there's probably around forty to forty-five tier-two groups that we've just supported over the years. Some groups drop out, some groups have departed leadership, some groups, whether departments not supporting or they chose not to continue. But I think cumulatively, probably have around that number.
Yeah, and the constituency of the Senate is based off of two things. One, every department has, theoretically has a Senate spot, and then they therefore could have an organization that we can fund based on that. And a lot of, a lot of departments do not send a senator, and so that's a lot of blank space that could potentially grow in over time. As well, we also fund cultural organizations, as long as they're, you know, graduate students running the organization. So we have probably like six or seven of those right now.
Yeah. And also, I just wanted to point out, so certain tier-two groups can also represent multiple departments as well. So there's one group, Sage, which represents engineering, so the seven departments of engineering, just sort of aggregate. But they essentially run programs or events that are somewhat engineering-related. They sort of represent the Senate collectively together.
So it's constantly in flux, you know, exactly who we're supporting.
Okay. Very good. Anything else, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So this is UConn-Purd. Thanks to both of you for being here. The committee's here to hear your presentation and answer any questions once you've finished with your presentation to make sure we're clear about your budget. If you wouldn't mind just introducing yourselves to us, and your goals, your organization, and then turnover use, and present the information.
Sure. So good afternoon. My name is Walter Otten. I'm the chapter chair of UConn-Purd.
Hello, my name is Sam Dadi. I'm the treasurer and chairman.
And we are here today to illustrate to this committee the commitment that UConn-Purd has to benefiting this community and how, and our spending in turn. So we've been on this campus for forty-six years, and each and every year, we have been fighting to create a more meaningful future for ourselves and for our fellow students. Our organization is centered around the idea that students don't have to wait to graduate in order to make an impact on this, this and their community. We are the nonpartisan, student-funded, student-directed advocacy group on campus. And through our five-dollar per student, per semester wage bill fee, we hire professional staff and resources of caliber. These staff and their experience gives us central resources that allow us to be students and successful in our campaign work at the same time, which is not always an easy task. These staff and resources separate us from any other activist group on campus. And using this model, if you will, we've been extremely successful in not only benefiting students, but those in our community. In two thousand and fourteen, we worked with the provost's office, the library's department, and USG to receive a one-hundred-thousand-dollar grant for open educational resources. These are low to no-cost textbooks that are available to students through the university or through the program OpenStax. And in addition, we worked with representative, state representative, right, Haddad and state senator May flexed to establish an open educational resource task force in the Connecticut General Assembly. And this grant system has already saved UConn students over two million dollars. And about a year ago, myself and our secretary, Kylie Hillbrook, traveled to Washington DC to lobby members of Congress for expanding infrastructure for open educational resources. After meeting with the Senate Appropriations Chair, the Senate Education Chair, and the President Pro Temp of the Senate, we received five million dollars in the federal appropriations bill for OER across the country. And that represents a direct investment in students, not only here, but across the country. Our new voters project built a student group coalition of over fifty of the largest student groups on campus, registered over two thousand students to vote, increased voter turnout by ninety percent over two thousand and fourteen. And factoring in the national increase in voter participation, we still increased turnout by thirty percent over the national mean. In, oh, right, in the fall of two thousand and seventeen, as I'm sure we all remember, the university came under three-hundred-million dollars' worth of cuts from the state. And we worked, worked, worked with undergraduate student government, graduate student senate, and a host of over a hundred and fifty other student groups. We generated calls and letters to Connecticut we generated calls and letters to Connecticut State legislators. Through our coordination with the governmental affairs office, we managed to save the university nearly two hundred million dollars, which is one-together direct investment in our community here. We achieved all of these goals through service, leadership, and engaged citizenship. Those aren't random words. Those, those same words come from the university's academic commission, state, state. These are, quote, creating, creating a contributing, excuse me, quote, creating contributing members of the state, national, and world's communities. Our work is, as a tier, 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 tier grade is to benefit students first and foremost, but it is also to execute that mission statement of the university. And with our new spending philosophy, we hope to grow even larger than the rabbit-broking experience in the last few years as an organization. Riquing the results from our Awareness Familiarity and Use AFEU Survey, we hope to spend more on what students need and what students have indicated to us through that survey. And now Sam is going to get to the specific goals.
Great. Thanks, Walter, for jumping to. Okay, so before I get into any specific items, I just wanted to, I guess, kind of start from a ten thousand, you know, feet overview, kind of get a general overview about what we kind of went into with the philosophy for our budget before we got to the specific items. So all of our items were kind of addressed with the idea that we were looking to increase spending, but in a responsible manner and in a way that provides the most benefit to students on this campus, both in response to our growing chapter size and in response to the AFEU survey. So also with our general spending trajectory, we're looking to spend more in the short term, while also decreasing that spending gradually in more of the long term in the future. We'll see some items specifically that, that, yeah, that deal with that. And let me address the fund balance. So the fund balance was a result of fiscal responsibility in the past and frugal spending. But it now puts us in a position to spend more, both again in response to the AFEU survey and to the growth of size of our chapter. And in the future, Walter and I have been working to nail down, this has been a kind of a difficult number to nail down. But Walter and I have been working closely with the business office and with Conver, statewide organizations, to nail down the exact items and services that they provide us in the way that they directly benefit the students. So right now, let's get to some specific items. Okay. So the first one, the major one that I'd like to address is line sixty-seven for promotional items. This was increased in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-two thousand dollars. This is for specifically for, we have seen other tier-three organizations like WUS and SUEWAG use promotional items like t-shirts, stickers, and water bottles to great success. I know I have at least like two WUS t-shirts in my personal wardrobe.
He's wearing one.
Yeah, I'm actually wearing one right now. But, um...
You've got to have it, sure.
Yeah, they're great t-shirts. But we think that our campaigns can use these as a means to promote not only the organizations and their campaigns, and their campaigns, but to bring attention to the issues that the students are trying to address. And also one quick note about that, it is comparable to certain other tier-threes budgets for promotional items. Moving on, line item six oh eight point one for refreshments for our organization. So this is focused on specifically retreats. Every fall, we hold a retreat where different organizations from around the region come together and we discuss trainings and we discuss everything that the chapters are doing to kind of come together and, you know, increase our efficiency and effectiveness as a chapter. So we're looking to do more of these retreats and this will cover the refreshments and food budget for those retreats. We would only be paying, of course, for the UConn students that attended, not for the other students from around different countries. Moving on, six oh eight point two, refreshments for events and programs. The distinction between those two items is that these, six oh eight point two is for campaign-specific refreshments. So this is for like, say, a campaign meeting. Say, if the Save the Bees campaign coordinator wants to buy pizza for her campaign meeting, to encourage students to come out, we think that's a good way to encourage students to go to the campaign meeting. Especially if it's a long one, we think, you know, if you're having a three-hour meeting, students really should be fed and keep them engaged. So, so let me address the big one that kind of jumps out, I think. Six fifteen point one, contractual services for the organization. This encompasses our payments to statewide organization Congress. I like to think of Congress as kind of the glue that helps hold our organization together. They provide many key services and materials and trainings to us that help us function as a chapter. Because we're only, we're students, we can only work in this part-time. There are full-time paid staff members that help us, that help our organization run. They provide, like I said, trainings, meetings, different materials that are outlined in our purchase orders that we work with the business office to kind of nail down. It is a difficult number to nail down because they are providing services, so it can be difficult to raise the exact value of a service compared to what we're good. But we do work closely with the business office to kind of nail down the best number that we think represents most accurately the services and benefits they provide to us and the student body in general. Moving on, six fifteen point two for contractual services for events and programs. This is a new one, for thirty thousand dollars. This was specifically for a speaker series that we want to start in the future. The thirty thousand dollars is based off kind of a loose estimate where we thought three speakers per semester at five thousand per speaker, which equals thirty thousand dollars in total for the year. In the future, future administrations can nail down a more exact figure. We don't really know how much exactly different speakers could cost, so we figured, hey, let's put an estimate out there and make sure that we have enough. But this can be nailed down more effectively in the future. But we're not intending to spend more than thirty thousand dollars. Moving on, another big one, six twenty-six, equipment capital, an increase of forty, a one-time increase to forty thousand. This was to kind of renovate our office. The furniture in our office is rundown and it kind of takes away from the professional atmosphere we're trying to, we're trying to, we're trying to decorate with our organization and our office. And we think that renovating our office with new furniture will help accomplish that goal. And it will help us run more effectively as a chapter if we're more organized, we're more placed to file up our papers and things like that, our documentation for the services Congress provides. We're not looking at spending, we're not looking at spending exactly forty thousand dollars, but just enough cushion for us to where if any unexpected expenses or taxes or anything comes into play, we're able to account for that and pay for it. Right, so six ten point one, supplies organization. So in the past, the amount we budgeted for, for supplies for organization hasn't been accurately reflected in our budget. So we feel that the fifteen hundred budget for it is more accurate reflection of the amount we actually spend on supplies. Are those the big ones that you're going to get, Walter?
Nope.
Love any questions. So you're anticipating in the last month, you have a risk year of twenty-one, like a deficit of one hundred thousand dollars. And so, once you've drawn off your surplus, what are you going to do?
Well, that would be exactly to the discretion of future administrations. We, but what we're trying, you can see at the end of the fund balance at the end of the year for twenty-one, around fifty, twenty-two thousand dollars. That's what we're trying to get to for the fund balance, we're trying to stick to that.
What exactly future administrations do you want to do?
It's a short-term, it's a short-term spending plan. So after we get our fund balance to a place where we think it's fiscally responsible and it still makes sense to collect the fee, then we, then we would return to our...
Fee spending.
So like, cutting down on our... Yeah, exactly.
So in six oh seven, right, we budgeted twenty-two thousand dollars, but then we decrease it back to sixteen thousand dollars. So it's like we can draw back on our spending.
Do you have any idea what the percentage of students who pay the fee versus those that leave it?
Around eighty. Eighty percent of students paying. And so, you know, our fee is anyone because it's the only wage will fee. And the reason why we keep it there is because if you vote no during our reaffirmation drive, we want you to still be able to exercise your voice. In that case, it would be to wage the fee. But all, we like to, and as I outline, we think that all students can benefit from the work that we do. So it's around eighty percent of students.
What would you project your...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions?
I just have a question. So on the contractual services, did they give you, I guess, the national organization, which they've talked to about? So you're going to increase by, to go up to a hundred and eighty thousand? Can you tell us that like five more campaigns or is it hard to estimate that?
So the hundred and eighty thousand was based, so last semester we approved purchase orders of up to ninety thousand. And we just multiply that by to get the yearly amount.
They don't tell us what campaigns to run. That is completely up to us. So if, if we have, if next year the chapter only wants to run four, that number will come way down. So it's just an up to amount. That's what we feel coming.
It's what you can, what your membership...
Yeah, we model the purchase orders off of what the chapters want and then the services, you know, based on that, what the services Congress can provide based on those.
So you're just using what you did?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
As a prediction.
And at the end of every semester, we have a vote on how many and what campaign you want to run. And that's what, and that's how we would get that number.
Any questions? Anything else you want to comment?
Nope. Thank you very much.